Unless you dial number one.
Say it like a...
You're speaking the truth.
I know, he's always walking up to me.
Truth.
And there's a reason he won't come fast.
So they're ready to open?
They are ready.
Playboard.
Couldn't call me, ignore it. Have the roll call.
Kessler.
Here.
Walters.
Burden.
Here.
Ewert.
Here.
Binner.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Hudson.
Nice invocation been given by Council and Rudden.
Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful weather that you've given to us. Father, we just pray that you would be with us as we go about the city's business, be with us that we make the right decisions, and we pray that you be with us in your precious name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who presentation, approve the minutes, events of June 25th, 2018. Mr. Better?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 25th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes. Discussion. Question.
Kessler.
What's name?
Rudden.
Yes.
Ewert.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
I want citizens to be heard. We previously did not have anyone, but instead of waiting in the media, I'm going ahead and ask the citizens to put their cards to come forward. We have Ken Bell of the library. So, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm appearing here tonight on behalf of the Friends of the Hayesville Community Library. As you know, Hayesville has been the site of the first citywide garage sale in the nation, and for 37 years, the host of the oldest continuous citywide garage sale. This garage sale is the largest fundraiser that the Friends nonprofit organization has and benefits entirely the community library. Once again this year, the Friends of the Library are seeking your permission to hold the 38th Annual Citywide Garage Sale on Saturday and Sunday, August 11th and 12th. They're seeking your authorization to sell permits and to suspend the issuance of permits on Friday, the 10th of August, and they would greatly appreciate your assent.
So not to sell on the 10th?
Yes.
But allow them to sell 11th and 12th.
That's correct.
Mr. Better?
I'll make a motion that we suspend selling garage sales license for the cities on August 10th and allow the Friends of the Library to sell garage sale permits for the 11th and 12th for their annual citywide garage sale.
Second.
That's all right. And a motion second to approve the request of the 10th, no sale 11th and 12th of August for sale by the Friends. Discussion. Question.
Kessler.
Yes.
Rudden.
Yes.
Ewert.
Yes.
Binner.
Yes.
Crum.
Yes.
On behalf of the Friends, thank you very much.
We also have Andrew Cookson here tonight. So, Mr. Cookson, you want to come forward and tell the council, and again, we need you to give your name and address with record.
Sure. Andrew Cookson, 426 West Fourth Street in Hayesville. Thank you for letting me come before you this evening to speak. I have some things to pass amongst council and a few of the staff members. I am coming to speak to you on an issue that is not new, it is not a surprise, it is a bridge on Meridian where it crosses the big ditch. This is an issue that many people have worked on, this is an issue many people have spoken to various members on. We've had issues on this in the past because we've had various solutions, everything from an attached bridge, a suspension bridge, all manner of things, complications that have come up on this. On one page, on one side of the page, you'll see a couple of gentlemen, these young men were just this last week having to cross that bridge in a shoulder that is approximately 12 inches wide. Clearly, this is not a safe thing to do, but unfortunately, there is no other way to make it across that bridge. What I am here tonight to do is to suggest a temporary solution. I have talked with Commissioner O'Donnell, I have spoken with Commissioner Wampo, or excuse me, Commissioner Hal in his role in Wampo, and between them, they have suggested a new approach at this. This is not a permanent solution, this is a temporary solution. It is called a road diet. By doing this, what this does is it takes this and makes this solely the county commission issue. What would be done would be to take preferably one lane, preferably the northbound lane, narrow it to a one lane north, it would go ahead and extend the existing sidewalks, so it's into the bridge, to the bridge. That one lane closure would then allow for bicycle and pedestrian traffic to have an area to safely cross the bridge and then reemerge on either side on existing sidewalks. Additionally, there would be a crosswalk added to 63rd Street. Again, this is all at the county expense, this is not a permanent solution. The estimated cost is $10,000 or less. Commissioner O'Donnell, in fact, about a week ago, spoke with Will Black on this issue, and they are all in support of it. The school district is in support of this.
Sorry, Mr. Cookson, that's not true.
I'm sorry?
That's not true, that's not our answer to, that was not our answer to Mr. O'Donnell.
I'm sorry. The, excuse me, I apologize, what did I say that was inaccurate?
You said that. We agreed, that we agreed, that Will Black agreed?
I don't know, I misspoke, I'm sorry. What I meant to say was that the two commissioners were in favor of this, my apologies.
And that's not quite true either, because I've spoken myself to Mr. O'Donnell, and he is not in favor of it, if the city is not in favor of it.
We have children that are crossing this bridge at their peril. My only request tonight is a letter of support to the county commission for them to look into this issue, for them to continue on working on this issue, and simply to take and provide a temporary solution until a more permanent one can be made. The school district has indicated their support to it. I think it would be a good thing for the city to indicate support, and as I've said, it does not preclude additional actions, more permanent structures, but at the time being, it is a solution I believe will assist in saving lives ultimately.
Mr. Cookson, have a engineering study been done to make sure what you're saying is truly safe?
That is part of what would be done by the county. At the moment, the study was made, and north and southbound at that intersection at 53rd Street, they're showing 8,400 cars a day pass through that intersection, so there has been some work done towards that.
But it's not truly a study of taking a four-lane road and shoving it down to a three-lane road.
That is correct.
So there is no traffic study that's been done for safety.
That would be part of what the county would...
There is no solution on how we can truly make it safe for the pedestrians and the bicycles to cross there at this point.
At this point, which is why I'm requesting a letter of support from the city.
And is there a reason that the county doesn't want to build it now?
I'm sorry?
Is there a reason the county doesn't want to put up the money to build the other bridge?
At the moment, I understand there are various issues, including funding. This...
Right, that's correct. But you do realize that the county is funding the aviation from Derby to Mulvane to the point of $2.4 million?
Yes, sir.
And you don't think that they surely ought to be funding here as far as the funding? They think that's a more project that needs to be done better than this project?
With due respect, sir, I don't care about that project. I care about our students.
I do care about the safety of the people that are there, and until we truly would see other information that says this is something that is truly safe and a commitment from the county that they will build an alternative bridge, I think that we're kind of putting the horse before the cart at this point, the cart before the horse at this point.
And I think the letter from this council stating support just simply to progress in the direction of finding a study, finding a temporary solution with the understanding that a more permanent solution can be found, and again, if this was a matter of convenience, if this was a matter of commerce, I'd say certainly we can put it off a little longer. We're talking about our students, our children, who are crossing a bridge with 8,400 cars each day and a 12-inch shoulder. I don't see that we can't send a letter of support saying, let's look into this.
Council likes to send a letter of support, it's up to them. I wouldn't recommend it because there are too many unanswered questions that say whether this is safe for our students or not, and drivers themselves over there.
And without...
Until they truly would come to us and show what they are willing to truly do, I would not recommend this council send them anything until they let us know what they are truly willing to do. They have not done that at this point.
With all due respect, sir, I believe that's part of the problem, is that this has become a one-upsmanship match and a sheffling match to see who can handle it.
No, I'm sorry, it's not. We've talked to them multiple times, and as they told you, all they have to do county-wise is do it themselves, it's their bridge.
I would rather us consider a single letter, we have to have a parent's...
They can come to us with alternatives, basically, without our letter of support.
Sure.
They own it. We've asked them more than once, knowing we need a bridge over there.
Yes.
So they can come to us with their proposal.
So it is preferable then that we go ahead as a community, as a council, and do nothing and wait for parents to come in and explain to us what our problems is, sir?
No, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Cookson, what I'm saying is, they have the power to do it, we've talked to them more than once about it, and if they want to do that, to come to us, to give us those alternatives, then we're sure willing to look at those alternatives.
As does this council, the ability to send a letter saying, we support looking into this.
I would not recommend that because it's way, there are too many unanswered questions for them to basically do at this point.
You do not support having letters saying to the...
That's not what I said, Mr. Cookson, I said, we are totally in support of making sure that is a safe crossing.
Yes, and you said we need additional information. I think that simple letter to the county saying, we support an additional study to find out this information, would help make this progress, it would certainly help show that we have an interest in this issue.
And our answer, my answer back to Mr. O'Donnell was, we prefer the bridge, but we would look at the other as long as it could be done in a safe manner, protecting the pedestrians and that's there. I've heard nothing back. So I've already talked to Mr. O'Donnell about the same things that you're saying at this point. He is aware of that.
Yes, sir.
So he can go forward with it if he wants to.
I will certainly share your thoughts with the community to let them know where you stand on this, and I trust that the rest of the city commissioners will share...
But do not say that we don't want to have that done. We truly want to make sure we have a safe crossing for the students, for bicycles, for everything over there.
Sir.
That's truly always been something that we are wanting to have done.
Sir, you said that you did not want to proceed if we did not have the information, correct?
No, that's not what I said. I said that you're early in trying to push something that we need more information for to make sure that it is safe.
Yes, sir, and so certainly couldn't we ask the city or the council, hey?
They can do it, they can do it anytime. We've already talked to them about it more than once.
And the message that they're getting at this moment is, they have no support from the city for this issue.
That's not the question. Yes, they do have. I already, I told you, I already talked to O'Donnell about it already.
Yes, sir, and you've said that you would like more information.
No, I told him that we would rather have the bridge, but we would look at supporting the other as long as it can be done in a safe manner.
Yes, sir, and so we're going to stand...
So he has our answer already.
And so we're going to stand and we stubborn on the fact that if we cannot have the bridge, we'll have nothing at all.
Mr. Crum?
I'm just curious, does Mr. O'Donnell still have time that he comes and spends here at the county, at the city building once a month or so?
Last Friday of the month is usually when he's supposed to show up.
So people can come in and talk to him then?
Sure.
And we are fully aware that that bridge is not ours, we just, we went up to the scene where the bridge starts, correct?
It's not our bridge.
Okay. And I as well talked to Mr. O'Donnell about this about three weeks ago, four weeks ago. He didn't mention anything about what you're proposing today, but they know that the city and the school district both want something done over there.
I brought the matters to Mr. O'Donnell only two weeks ago, sir.
My first thought is that the crossing of 63rd Street would not be safer. And so if they want to do a study and bring it to us and show us that it would be safer, I'm all for that, but the mayor's completely right. I mean, they don't, they already know that they own the bridge and they know that they can do these things, they don't need, they know that we're in support of, they know the school district would like to see something like that, too. They don't need a letter from us to say, we'd like you to do this. If we do that, we're telling them that we might support another option besides just getting a new bridge, and we need a new bridge. And I've also been told that the life on that bridge is within 10 years right now, and they're going to have to replace it anyway.
Yes, sir.
I don't want that thing cut down to one to three lanes for 10 years.
And the letter I'm asking for is not to support the road diet. What I'm asking for is to support looking at, to gather the information, the reason I'm asking for the letter, and as you said, they are aware of it, but right now, as I've taken account, I know of two commissioners on the city, excuse me, on the county commission that are in support of it. That letter may be just the thing to sway a third one that would then be able to have the county go forth and get that study done. Without it, I don't know what will happen.
Mr. Better?
Just to refresh my memory, this issue about the bridge on Meridian and building onto it to support a bicycle pedestrian crossing safely, this has been several times that I can recall in front of this council for various things. And just to refresh my own memory, it's just been in the last year when the county realized that structurally we could not scab something onto the side of the bridge for a pedestrian crossing. Wasn't that, wasn't that a pretty recent development, the last year or so?
What actually happened was they cannot attach one to there, so they had a engineer, they had engineered a separate bridge, basically, to go across. They bid it out, it came out at twice what their engineers, the estimate has come out, they didn't want to spend the money, so they killed it. We're still getting down to money. This bridge could have been built if the county commission would have spent the money at that time. So now, all they're doing is coming to us to say, we still don't want to spend the money. We don't think your bridge is worth it, we don't want to spend the money. But that's not the question here. The question is, the only real safe thing is a separate bridge over there.
That is, that's your fault, sir.
And they, he already told you that they didn't think Wampo funds even on beyond this, even though they have applied for over $2 million of Wampo funds to build this bridge, and that their part was going to be a little over $1 million, that they don't want to spend the $1 million to build this bridge. So they're coming up with these alternatives with the idea that they could appease the situation without having to spend the money. And you're saying this is a temporary situation. I don't believe it's a temporary situation. They will never spend the money if this is done. So it's got to be shown that this is truly even a safe alternative for anyone to even move forward with it.
By them going through the road diet option, it takes Wampo out of the question, it makes it solely the county commission question.
Excuse me?
If we were to look at the road diet, the proposed solution that I have suggested, that we ask the county to study, it does not make it a Wampo project, it makes it simply a county project.
What I'm saying is, the county does not want to spend the money. That's why you're getting this other alternative.
It's not something I've gotten, sir.
Yes, you are. That's why the alternative that they have come up with, you have two county commissioners, you also have a assistant director and a director who have come up with this idea because they don't want to spend the money. They don't want to spend the money to match the Wampo funds that looks like can be approved to build this bridge. It's coming down to, it really comes down to the money that the county wants to spend. This could have been, this basically could have been done a year ago, two years ago. This thing has, was designed over two years ago to be done. The county won't spend the money. It's a money situation. You may say it's a safety situation, you may say that they're giving us an alternative, a temporary, I don't believe it. They will never spend the money, or they could have already have spent the money. They don't mind spending the money going from Derby to Mulvane with Wampo funds that they have to match, but they don't want to do it our part.
With all due respect, sir, I don't think it is a matter of funding, I don't believe it is a matter of who gets it done. I believe it's a matter of the lives of the children that cross that bridge. I know that even if we do get an approval from the county tomorrow, it will be a minimum of six months before we see a bridge. We have school starting in 60 days. What I want is to provide a safer alternative. What I'm suggesting is not that we wholeheartedly embrace the idea, I'm saying that we need to simply tell the county, let's look at it. And this way, if something unfortunate should happen because we chose to do nothing, well, we can say at least then, we may attempt to find out a better way.
We've already done that. The letter will make no difference. We have already done that more than once to the county. Mr. Rudden?
Well, I'm just going to put my two cents with him because my grandkids go across that bridge, okay? And I take an issue with the fact that you say this council doesn't take matters, that we worry about our kids and the safety of our kids. Thus belong me. Myself and everybody on this county, on this city council up here care about the kids. Like the mayor said, and Steve, and Mr. Crum has said, this has been an ongoing situation. I have been on council since 2000. When they put the bridge in, we talked about it way back then. We have talked, this is, this is not something new. This has been, like the mayor said, this is something that has come up time after time after time, and it all goes back to the county, the county saying, we're not going to do it because we don't want to spend the money. I would love to have a bridge across there so my grandkids don't have to cross that. But the county is not going to turn the money loose to build this bridge because they don't, to be honest with you, they really don't think that it's necessary. And that is Mr. O'Donnell's stand on it. I've already talked to him, Mr. Crum has talked to him, the mayor's talked to him, I've talked to him, he really just don't care.
As of 30 minutes ago, his position was that he thought that the road diet was a good temporary solution.
Okay, I'm just going to...
He has, he has no basis for saying that at this point.
And so, for lack of a ten cent piece of paper, to investigate a $10,000 solution, we're going to see who's more stubborn and...
And we don't know if it's $10,000, we don't know if it's $10,000, we know if it's $20,000, we don't know if it's another $100,000 or where it is. We have already more than once talked to our county commissioners, our representative, to ask them that we want something done. They can do it. It is not until, basically, that has now come up, you know, they could have given this alternative to us a long time ago, couldn't they? I mean, this has been a ongoing situation for a long time. Why didn't they come up with the solution at that time?
Sorry, I don't know. I'm in the county commission.
That's what I'm telling you. We've asked them for more than once, and now they've come up with, now they've come up with this because they don't want to spend the money.
But you're mischaracterizing it, sir. They did not come up with it, I approached them with this.
Well, Mr. Weber basically brought it up to a meeting that we were in before you had talked to Mr. Weber.
I've never spoken with Mr. Weber.
It's something that has been, he's the assistant county.
Assistant director.
Assistant director.
I've never spoken with Mr. Weber.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I've spoken with Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Hal.
Right, and this was something, basically, that they came up with because they don't want to spend the money. You may think it's not a money situation from the county, but it is a money situation from the county. I talked to Mr. O'Donnell more than once about it, and they killed it, basically. They could have already built this bridge, but because the bids came in at $3 million, they wouldn't do it. It is a money situation.
I will gladly take your message and share it with the school board, I will gladly take your message and share it with the parents of the district. Perhaps, maybe one of them has a better solution, perhaps one of them can encourage it, encourage it in a way that we can move forward instead of us standing to see who can outstern the other. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on into the agenda then, approval of license bonds. Nothing there. Item 300 industrial award, resolution, nothing there. Item 4, notice of invocation, a governing body announcement. Announcement, Mr. Crum?
Stuff going on at the library, the 12th is the next Lego group that they have going. Next genealogy group's going to meet on July 14th, that's at 2 o'clock. Their next movie night will be July 16th, well, the movie will be dinosaur, Disney Dinosaur, which is an older movie, but it's a very good video, a very good movie. And then, school district, online enrollment started today, it goes until the 26th. All returning students in the school district must enroll online. Kindergarten students who attended kindergarten roundup in April can also enroll online. The enrollment instructions were mailed to students' homes in early July, and as I said, that all started today. If somebody doesn't have access to a computer at their home, they do have computers and printers available at the administration building at Meridian and Grand, and you can go in there, and they've also got people there to assist you. So school district, and then Hayesville, all the habits is having a thing in the park, and it just left my, left my head.
Zumba.
Zumba in the park. It's at 7 o'clock, it's $10 a person, it'll be at the band shelter at Riggs Park. And also this weekend, just a reminder, Friday and Saturday, the league swim meet will be held at the pool. There'll be six teens there, so there'll be a lot of people. The 13, 14, and 15 to 18s will swim, beginning at 1 o'clock on Friday, and they'll swim until early evening, and then Saturday morning, the 8 and unders, up to 12-year-olds, will take their turn to swim. If you're looking for something fun to come watch, it doesn't, I can almost guarantee you, if you live in town, you're going to know somebody that's swimming. I'd encourage you to come out and watch if you get a chance, it is free. There will be a lot of people around there, and you need to watch for traffic when you're driving around the pool this weekend. That's all I have.
From the senior center to July 10, the regional transportation, which is tomorrow, study, Pizzaville study, we're meeting there from 9 to 11, showing the results of the last committee meeting and feedback for the transit concept. Also on Tuesdays, there's the Common Ground Mobile Farmers Market, we'll be there, senior center from noon to 12:30, 30 minutes, so you've got to move fast. Wednesday, July 8, Panettiere Bread, 8 o'clock, one package per person. Friday, July 13, monthly birthday dinner, fried chicken with the entree, followed by bingo, call ahead and bring a dish to serve 6 to 8. Travis Foot Clinic, call for appointment Monday, July 16. Thursday, July 19, share your salad at 11:30, everyone bring some type of egg salad, here's how to salad. Friday, July 20, Texas Hold'em tournament begins at 9 a.m. Whoever has the most chips at 11, there is no money involved. Saturday, July 21, Cardinal Painting Party, no artistic ability required, all materials provided for 10 bucks, they have space. Call center...
Call center, five-two-nine-five-nine-zero-three. The other thing is, we need to have a land bank meeting on July twenty-third at six o'clock. And this board can't, can't tip it up because we're not in land bank. We're in the, in the council at this point. So, just so you know, notice wise, we'll have a land bank meeting at six before the next council meeting. Item B is a note of council regarding the new businesses in town, which are-
Mattress liquidation.
Mattress liquidation. They're here for short term, I understand.
Yes.
And then we have an email from cost communication regarding contract negotiations, email from cost communication regarding channel changes. Item five, old business, nothing. Item six, other business, A, consideration of planning recommendation for vacation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Before you in your packet, I provided you with a copy of the memorandum and the staff report that was recently, for a vacation that was recently done for three thirty-three North Moy Court in front of Planning Commission on June fourteenth. Three thirty-three North Moy Court is wanting to vacate the five, five feet of the portion of their eastern utility easement so that they can put in window wells in their, in place of the existing windows that are there now. The windows that are there now are very small. I have contacted all of the utility companies involved, called eight-one-one, to ensure that there are no utilities, main lines in this utility easement. As a matter of fact, the only thing that's really in there is a gas line, which is a service line from the main line which runs east-west on North Moy Court at this time. Other than that, there is no other utilities in this easement. The Planning Commission has recommended approval to the council for five feet of the utility easement from the southern setback, front setback line to the southern south portion of the northern utility easement. The only thing that I've heard back in regards to utility companies and the request, they have no issues with this vacation, but they are requesting that the property owner be aware that if any service lines need to be moved, that the expenses for that will be on the property owner, and I have made him aware. The fire department, their response to all of this is they would be happy to see window wells. I am ready for any questions you may have.
Would you like to do council? Do you want to grant this, Mr. Crumme?
I make a motion that we approve the vacation order, that part of the eastern utility easement in Paratree Edition, Hayesville, Sedgway County, Kansas. Describe as Lot Twelve, Block Two, Paratree Edition be approved as presented.
Second.
Most excited to approve the vacation as presented. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Dinner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move on then into item B, consideration of community building revitalization.
Good evening, Mayor, council. In your packet, you have a memo regarding the community building revitalization. The interior does need to be repainted. The walls need patched, and the ceiling needs patched and repainted. The flooring needs to be refinished. It has places that are scuffed and worn off. It's been taped, put on ceilings that needs to come down and on walls, and the doors are rusting, the exterior doors. We need to replace those two doors. The trim has faded. I mean, it's been, been there, and nothing has been done with that for some time, so that also needs to be refinished. I did go out to try to get a contractor to do all three, or all of the items that I mentioned. One of them gave, KRO gave me a, the bid for all of those. The other two contractors suggested an alternative flooring. But we would kind of like to, since it's in the historic area, kind of stay with that theme and just refinish the floors. So, this time staff is recommending that we go with KRO for the bid of eleven thousand ninety-three dollars. Any questions?
Mr. Kessler?
Make a motion that we approve the bid with KRO for eleven thousand nine three dollars.
Second.
Make a motion, in a second, to approve the bid eleven thousand nine three from KRO to refinish, revitalize the community building. Question, Mr. Crum?
Have we gone in and done anything to the floor in the interim? I mean, have we tried to-
We, we, they're kind of on a five-year rotation. That's all they would warranty it for was five years. Every five years, we have to go in and redo the floors.
Okay, thank you.
And if five years are up now, so.
Good.
Another discussion, council? Do you make a motion in a second? Still on discussion? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewert?
Yes.
Dinner?
Yes.
Parton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Move on then to item C, which is the review of our coming up 2019 budget. So, I will turn it over to Will. He has a PowerPoint, so you can see, basically, what some of the supporting budget figures look like.
We've got the entire budget in your packet. If you look through your packet, it's all there. This will just be a brief presentation, getting the high points, and then we can answer any questions you might have. Now, we'll go over the mill levy as it compares to last year's, the valuation increase that we saw this year. Look at the sales tax fund, staff adjustment, personnel detail. We'll also look at our city's debt service and how that's changing with the payments we're making this year, and go over the next steps in the budget process, and have a question period. This is the mill levy comparison sheet. You can see in 2018, when we did the proposed budget, we proposed a budget that was at forty-eight point four-nine-seven mils. Because the valuation in November dropped just a little bit, the certified mill rate was forty-eight point five-zero-zero. For 2019's budget, we're proposing a mill rate of forty-eight point four-four-one mils, which just happens to be the same rate that we had eleven years ago when we went into the 2008 budget. And that's a decrease from the certified mill rate of point zero-five-nine mils. Now, this is just a visual representation of that. You can see the rate's been pretty much the same since that 2008. There've been a little bit of up and a little bit of down. Valuation that we had in 2017, the final valuation was fifty-seven million, one hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred fifteen dollars. Our 2018 mid-year valuation is fifty-nine million, three hundred three thousand, two hundred ninety. It's an increase of two million, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, seven seventy-five. So, I put that next line on there, the impact of the 2018 mill rate, the forty-eight point four-four-one that's proposed. The value of the mils go up two thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars, so the total change or impact is one hundred five thousand to the positive. The city sales tax, our one cent sales tax, our estimate for 2019 is eight hundred thirty thousand. Our 2018 estimate was eight hundred sixteen thousand. You can see the, the reason we increased that estimate is because what's coming in this year has been above that estimate, and so I think that'll continue on at this point. So, we've got in there for streets, fifty percent of the total estimate, and park, ten percent, and recreation, forty percent. For staff adjustments, we've got one new position, and it's a park worker one added to the 2019 proposed budget. This is to take care of the new area at Dorner Park, both soccer fields, dog park, and any other grassy areas in there that we also need to move. The adjustment in hours worked is to the office clerk in the city clerk's department. That's a change from twenty hours per week to forty hours per week for an existing employee. We do have in the 2018 budget, a step increase with satisfactory performance evaluations for 2018. That took effect with the first full pay period in July, so we're currently in that pay period. For the 2019 budget, since we go every other year, we do a step increase one year, then we do the co-liver the next year. So, in 2019, we got in the proposed budget, a thirty-five cent increase based on the calculation Janie did with the CPI. Thirty-five cent increase to step one of every position on the pay chart. And when I say that, it's not just a step one. It, of course, flows through the pay chart. Each step is three percent higher than the previous step. And that would be effective in the first full pay period in January of 2019. For debt service, this year, we're also seeing a reduction in outstanding debt. Our GO bond principal balance at the middle of this year, middle of 2018, eight million, twenty-five thousand. We'll be paying off one million, three hundred twenty-five thousand in principal, so we'll be down to six million, seven hundred thousand. We do have, coming on, three different temporary notes, and the temporary note balances in mid-year. We've got eight hundred ninety-five thousand for the quarter acres and the Southfield paving and drainage project, which we paid for by specials. We've got the one million, one hundred seventy-five thousand for country lakes and willows, thirty-sixty lots in that addition. And those are again, will be on specials, and Southampton, third addition, three hundred and forty thousand. Once again, those will be paid for with specials. So, the total of the temporary notes we have out right now, two million, four hundred and ten thousand. So, even though when we bond those, they'll go on to our GO bond principal balance, they're all gonna be funded by specials. Certificates of participation, we have the one at this point for the Hayesville Activity Center. We have paid off the former Activity Center building in 2017. The final payment for the new Activity Center will be in 2035. And you'll see our 2018 payment is two hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred seventy-five, and a hundred and thirty thousand, and that is principal. So, after we make that payment this year, principal balance is, it'll be three million, three hundred twenty-five thousand. Some of the big upcoming capital expenditures we're looking at, one is the North Main street replacement. It's a project that is, we're looking to get programmed in the WAMPO short-range plan, the tip within the 2020 or 2021 timeframe for the actual project. So, with the project, we're looking at a thirty percent city match of the funds. The construction's around two hundred, excuse me, two million. So, our portion for construction match would be about six hundred thousand. And we've got the design already approved through PEC, and they're working on the design at this point. That's a hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred. Both of those expenses are in our capital improvements fund. For wastewater, looking at a rotary press, which is a, how do you describe that, Tony?
Basically, right now, our sludge application, we use our Challenger tractor to land apply, surface apply. Our Challenger is worth over a hundred thousand dollars. It's well past its age. So, also, our land to actually apply to is getting smaller and farther away. So, this is actually kind of what I call it. It turns our sludge into like Play-Doh, and then we can get rid of it that way. We're looking at options of landfill, city wood stall, things like that, or the farmers. This would take that sludge, which is basically very liquid, and then gets the water out of it, makes it like Play-Doh, so.
So, the cost estimate after that right now is between two million and two million and five. For the rotary press, the housing and the connection to our current wastewater facility systems, approximately two hundred thousand for design and eighty thousand for a dump truck for hauling the solids. Those are some of the larger capital expenditures that we're looking at. Next steps, the approval of the publication of the notice of hearing will be at the next council meeting, July twenty-third. Once the, that's approved, that would set the maximum amount, maximum dollar amount that we can levy. We could come down, but we couldn't go up after that publication goes out. And the public hearing date would be set at August thirteenth, where you do the final review of the budget, so we can get it out to the county by the twenty-fifth, which is our due date. And we can answer any questions you have at this time.
Mr. Crum, do you have a question for here?
Yeah. On the new hires, I know we added an assistant to the senior center. Was that position already budgeted, and that's why it's not shown in the new position?
That was for the 2018 budget, so we presented that with, you know, last year's budget presentation, but it's not a difference going into 2019.
Okay. And then on the sludge thing, Tony, is there anybody around here that uses a system like that?
Yeah, I mean, there's several options. Lance and I, the wastewater superintendent, went out to Choctaw, Oklahoma. They actually have the same range, same unit, same everything. We went out there, visited it, see if it was a good option. Uses less electricity, less space, so we think it's a, a good financial decision.
What's the law, I mean, how much do we have to pay to, to distribute it somewhere else?
There's several options. Like I said, one, I'm just hauling it to City Wood Stall. One is selling it as Play-Doh. The other one is handing to a landfill. Choctaw, Oklahoma, has a storage bin where it just dumps in there. Then you contract out with the waste facility to pick it up. So far, it's looking like the financial benefit would be to take it to City Wood Stall or to a landfill. And that's why the dump truck was in there.
Okay. And then, I know we don't have any control over this, Will, but do we have any idea what the, the mill levy for the fire department, if it's gonna stay the same, go up, go down? And same thing with school district?
Haven't heard, haven't heard on either of them what their plans are.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Odom?
I was kind of curious, if you put in there the North Main, we, we talking from Grand to, how far?
Grand to the, city limits, right into the, south of the bridge.
Right into the bridge.
That's kind of like they did what they did east and west, where they pulled it all out, redo it.
Correct. East Grand, yeah.
Plus, plus there'll be a ten-foot sidewalk on the-
West.
West side, basically going all the way there, plus a couple of additional crop swaps will be in there. So, it's, and the design council approved already.
Right.
We're having our design done. So, hopefully, in fact, I don't know if we've sent out the information that, to the council or not, so they can go in and look, and then let, let the, what's sorry, Metropole Planning have comments about the projects that are there.
We'll be sending that out shortly and discuss that.
So, there's a, they sent out an email asking for comments on the upcoming tip projects. There's twenty-four million dollars in money that comes out in twenty and twenty-one. Right now, there's been about twenty-three million dollars in projects that have been live for. So, using those figures, it looks like that we should, either twenty or twenty-one, be able to get the main street done, knowing at that time, we'll match thirty percent and cause us approximately six hundred thousand of our money. The rest of it comes from the Wishfire and Metropole Federal money base. Mr. Kessler?
So, for the upcoming capital improvements, are those items currently being funded, or we have money for 2018, or is that something we're looking for for nineteen?
The mayor and I have a working Fund Thirty-Six Capital Improvements Fund cash flow. The North Main has been in that ever since we've had the project on the board. On the wastewater, we would have to get a little bit better idea what the actual cost is, and then check with bond council, see what it would cost, and how many years we could find it for with the amount we have in wastewater for capital improvements.
We're just trying to let you know what may be coming up, so you have an idea of what may be down the, down the road. I don't see having to really fund it totally in debt service in nineteen. Could possibly at this point, depending on what design is and time and so on and so forth. We just wanted to make sure you're informed of those things that may be out there coming up. Other questions? We know that there's a lot of information in the budget itself that we didn't think you would truly be able to truly go through all tonight at this point, so. If you have additional questions, you might email or call Will, and then what Will can do is send those questions out to each one of the council people themselves. So, you can hear what everyone else is asking and get an answer back. That way, we wouldn't have to have a separate workshop in doing it. We can truly answer those questions. We legally, Will can do it, or I can, Will can do answers to each as a group, but you guys can't talk between yourselves doing it. So, if you have a question, that type of thing, send them to, to Will, and he will answer, so that everybody gets the question and gets the answer both, once you, once you have time to go through the full budget just there. Any other questions tonight? If not, we'll then move on to the quarterly economic development update.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Business activity, hopefully, next square, I'm not reporting on Tony's Play-Doh shop opening next to McDonald's. But we've got Water Source Technology. They're going in next to, it used to be, what is it, Excel Sports. They bought the warehouse, kind of, kind of filling out what their, their game plan is. They're just now getting started. Mattress liquidation, four-twenty-four West Grand. Yes, it is temporary. In the, the report, La Paz Edita Grill will be moving to four-twenty-four West Grand. They are, they're dropping the Authentic Mexican out of their title. They're going to open their menu to steaks, pastas, full-service bar, fine, sit-down dining, so you'll have, you know, the ability to be waited on. And we have awarded them the dining and, family dining and restaurant establishment grant. And we have awarded them the dining and, family dining and restaurant establishment grant, which we've had for, going on five years, I believe, so it's kind of nice to be able to award that. They're doing very well right now in their space. Speaking of that space, 418 West Grand Avenue, they're going to stick with it and rename it the Hayesville Cafe, because they want to do a coffee shop in there that'll work in tandem kind of with Wichita State going in across the street. They've looked to partner with the school district for, you know, the stomping grounds, not only for hiring, but, you know, just, that's going to be their customers in the morning, might be their customers in the evening, so once they're out of school. So it's kind of a win-win. They were also awarded the coffee shop grant based on their application. Going on the, oh yeah, on the 060 Sports, I believe you have before you, 060 Sports, that is leasing out the old Activity Center. They said to join them for their grand opening, July 21st, 2018, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., 7106 South Broadway. They are taking reservations for bazooka ball, escape rooms, and field rentals, so very excited. Ginger and I went and did a tour, a little mini tour today to see progress, and it's moving along quite nicely. Talking about our valuation going up, you see new home construction, total of 1.3 million. And kind of the segue into the Build Hayesville and Gold Star programs, this is the last year for the Gold Star programs. It is, those five payments are expiring. I'm, I'm very glad that we suspended the Build Hayesville in 2017, because we would have added another 25 to that 33 enrollment. This should be the worst year for, for payouts. Everybody's either in a hundred percent or an eighty percent payout on their level. They have, they go the first year a hundred percent, the next three are eighty percent, and then the next three are sixty, and the next three are forty. So this should be the, the bulk of it. New resident surveys, water, 53, we're, we're moving people in here very rapidly. Happy to see the number, though, of buyers at forty-nine percent and renters at fifty-one, almost a fifty-fifty. Haven't seen that even close. I think forty-sixty is the closest we've been. Reasons for moving to Hayesville, again, families, sixty-six percent is usually the highest, and then school, and then work. You know, people say beautiful, beautiful community, new beginnings, coming home, and I love Hayesville. Going on to, we'll just kind of fast-forward through Bike Hayesville, the mayor's bike ride was a huge success, doubled, doubled attendance just for the ridership, plus we had extra people just hanging around. We had food trucks this year, the Admiral made an appearance. It was, it was great. We look forward to the event again next year. WAMPO, through WAMPO, we have the bicycle pedestrian implementation study currently going on to, to help see if we are on track with our proposed pedestrian plan, bicycle plan. That should be, I believe it should be ending in August and coming to conclusion. Also, we are doing a transit feasibility study with Andover, Derby, Mays, and Wichita Transit. That will be concluding in August. Tomorrow, Connecting Communities is the community outreach tomorrow at the Senior Center. That's Tuesday, July 10th, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00. Let Your Voice Be Heard, it's for your public input. This is, they've already been in town once, this is their follow-up, to kind of go over the results a little bit and take more questions and comments from the community. Do you want to brag on our community, out of all those, Andover, Derby, Mays, and Wichita, they had 279 respondents on their survey. Hayesville was 127 of those, at forty-six percent, so very, very pleased with those results. The senior living feasibility study, I talked to Melissa this afternoon. She's from vacation, she's kind of compiling some loose ends, trying to get her report finalized by the first of August, so hopefully we'll have kind of a, something more to give you here coming up next month. Hayesville Land Bank, obviously, we'll, we've got the lots in River Forest, we'll, Timber Creek as well. Things are still moving, a lot of houses going up over there. If you haven't been or haven't driven through in a minute, please do. It's kind of nice to see all the activity. The marketing campaign, if anybody ever wants to see the strategic marketing that we're doing, it's, it's a seventeen-page report, so, I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty easy read, but we refrain from putting it into the packet for state's concerns, but, you know, just know that we're, we're reaching people for, through clicks and ads and, and through Wichita, Derby, Andover, Augusta, Park City, Bel Air, those are the main communities that we're reaching. You know, sites that are drawn from, you know, AccuWeather, Wichita Eagle, KSN, and T-Mobile seem to hit the tops. We do the billboard, 63rd and Broadway, the Hayesville Sun Times, and then Hello Hayesville. We've, you know, through our strategic marketing, that's our landing page for Lots For Sale, events calendar, and whatnot. We also sponsored the Admirals Breakfast this year for River Fest. That was a partnership between Hayesville Pride, HFI, Chamber of Commerce, and the City of Hayesville. So we don't know when we'll get another Hayesvillian as an admiral, and I'm sure, I don't know if he's back from Florida yet, but I think he's probably still exhausted. Special events, we had cruising days last Saturday. I don't know what I've done to Mother Nature, but hopefully we've made, made our peace for the next one. It was shaping up to be a wonderful event. The front moved through right about as the fire performers were about to light things on fire, and they kind of decided not to do that. The live music had just started. We had a whole car club come through and then leave once the front moved through. Half the market was open, the bank was open, the blacksmith shop was open. We were, like I said, we were, we had good activity there, and I was very pleased, but there again, we'll, we'll try again. That's the final Saturdays of every month through September, and I hope to see it out there. Incentives, just know that's what we have now, is Trees for New Homes, you know, everything's a case-by-case basis, but abatements for new commercial property, possible rent assistance, depending on your business, it's available upon request. We still have the $5,000 grant for the Sports Bar and Brew Pub, and so that's the only grant we have available. The other thing, the final thing, is Wichita State, WSU Tech, WATC, formerly WATC. Fall classes will begin this year. We are working with WSU and WSU Tech on the ribbon cutting. More details will come to, to surface. We're, they're taking the lead, and we're waiting on them. So I can answer any questions or give clarification. All right? Thank you.
Item seven, department reports, Will.
Thursday, July 19th, is City Day at the Hayesville Aviators. It's at Plaggins Carpenter Park. Game time is 7:00 p.m. at Vulcan Field, so come on out, enjoy the game. This Saturday is Kids' Day at Hometown Market. Rose, do you want to share some of the events?
Yes, we're going to have TJ the Horse will be providing rides for the kids. We will have rock painting, of course, crafts for the kids to do, and the Big Giant, ginormous unicorn water feature, so lots of water coming out. Venders like that little thing. And anything else we can come up with, so come on out, have fun.
That's all I have.
Stay tuned.
Okay, early voting's coming up. At the community library, we have August 2nd and 3rd from noon to 7:00, and the 4th from 9:00 to 4:00. If anybody wants a different location or time, they would need to contact the Sedgwick County Election Office at sedgewickcounty.org or 660-7100.
Chief?
Good evening, mayor and council. We have the monthly Coffee of the Cop this Wednesday, July 11th, at the VFW. It'll be from 8:00 to 9:30, so come on out and visit with us then. How else have our visiting officer this evening is Officer Matt Trillo. He's currently just got out of the DARE certification, so he had to go to South Dakota for two weeks to go be DARE certified, teach DARE, and he's got some more training coming up, so he can go be an SRO next year. So currently, he's on our afternoon shift, so say hi to him as you go by out there. That's all I have. Thanks.
Tony, how it works?
Have nothing.
And George, your question?
Evening, mayor and council. This Thursday, we will have our Food Truck Thursdays in City Hall Parking Lot. Ken and Barbie will be here. They have several different items. I know their loaded fries are really good, from what they've told me, so you can come and check that out from 11:00 to 1:00. As Mr. Crum stated, that swim finals will be Friday and Saturday. The pool will be closed to the public, the splash pad will still be open, so you could go over there, because it is supposed to be hot. Latchkey enrollment for the 2018-2019 school year begins on Monday, July 16th, so you're needing Latchkey, you can get those forms online or come to Activity Center. We will be having our next movie night in the park on Friday, July 20th. We will be showing Sandlot with the final baseball games and everything finalized. It's an old movie, but it's a good one. And then, just reminder, we have our membership drive going on for the month of July. It's $12 off any three-month membership, and then half-price off a, a single pool pass, which makes it $25 for pool passes, so. Need any more information, you can contact Activity Center. That's all I have.
Item A appointments, we have none. Item nine offered against citizens. I see no further citizens. Can executives, I have none. Item 11 bills be paid, a, bills be paid for the first half of July. Is there?
Anyway, I'd like to make a motion that we pay the second half of the July bills.
Second. About the first half?
About the first half? Oh, I guess this is the first of the month. Okay. I'm just rushing them.
Anthony, you know.
I know, it is. It's going to be starting soon. The first half of the July bills.
Nice thinking that.
No second, pay the first half of July bills? Question? Question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes. Item 12, consent agenda, have nothing. Item 13, council items, a council concerns. Mr. Kessler?
Just like to see that, I'm currently on our ordinances for, for signage, for, you know, election signs, but currently fourteen days prior to the election. But people start voting before that, so I see about making that more than fourteen days, because, you know, right now, people are voting before signs are allowed to be put out. The mail-in and early voting. I know the county, I'm not sure what the county is, I know, what was ours, it used to be like forty-five days?
And I, I don't remember what it was, used to be. We cut it down until, because it was being abused, is why we cut it down at this point. My understanding, there is some state law that legislatures, self-serving themselves again, voted basically on a forty-five-day type situation, plus restricting a lot of things that we could do. So if we look at again. Other council concerns? One thing I guess I want to make clear is that this council is very concerned about safety on that bridge. We have people that have come to us already and said, "I will not let my children walk across that bridge. I will not let my children use bicycles across that bridge." And we don't want it being done either. We want total safety there. The county has never wanted to step up and make a commitment to us to make sure it is safe. Now that this idea has been floated, they're looking at some way, in my opinion, to not have to spend the money to put in this bridge. They may say it's a temporary situation, but this bridge could have already been built if they would have done the, building the bridge and set the money at that time. As I said, there is already a proposal that over $2 million of the Wichita area Metropole money from federal would be go into the project with a million dollars of the county money, but the county at this point is looking for alternatives on not having to spend the million, the million dollars. We want to make sure truly that it is totally safe. The county owns a bridge, the county could have come to us a long time ago with alternatives and how to fix this problem, because we've talked to them more than once about it. We've talked to our commissioner, we've talked to their public works department, and we've pushed for this more than one time out there. We want to make sure that it's safe for the people using that bridge. Right now, there are no lights on that bridge, there are no lights on north or south, either one, and from what you're hearing is a proposal to shove four-lane traffic into two-lane traffic at a time, I mean, there's eighty-four hundred cars going down there. And if the county wants to come back with a proposal to us and let us know how this truly can be done, and how it can be a safe thing, we truly would be all for it. I don't know where this $10,000 figure came from, it was pulled from the air, as far as I'm concerned, but again, we are very concerned and want to make sure that it is a safe situation, and we would look at alternatives if the county wants to present those alternatives to us at this point. My saying, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about it, but, Mr. Crum?
I didn't say my biggest concern, I think you're, you're switching one safety concern for another safety concern, because we know when they were doing work over there, we had all kinds of problems over there with, with traffic. And like I said, I think you'd probably actually make the intersection of 63rd Meridian more dangerous than it already is. It's almost impossible to turn left off of there anyway. And if you start taking high school drivers that are driving there every day in the morning, and they're trying to funnel them into a shorter lane, you're, you're asking, you're creating, in my opinion, probably a worse safety position than what we're in right now.
My understanding is, in this proposal, it's not Mr. Cook's proposal, this is a proposal from the county, that it become a no-left turn at 63rd, which would just compound the problem even more at this point. So, Mr. Kessler?
You see, right now, we really don't know what, what's going on, but if you have a study, if it can be done safely, I mean, I, I would like to see something, I mean, even, even if it's down to like three lanes, you know, one lane being, you know, pedestrian and a bike, if it can be done safely with the traffic study, or engineering study and all that, I mean, if it can be done safely, I mean, I'd be, I'd be for it.
And the county can do that if they want to. We've already talked to them more than once. Mr. Crum?
Well, I'm just, we got four lanes going across that bridge, and now we will put to three lanes. We, we went through almost a year, or close to a year, of a nightmare when they redone the bridge. It was a nightmare for everybody, and now the county wants to come back and say, "Well, we'll drop it down to three lanes," and you got one, it's totally ignorant.
Why didn't they make that proposal when the bridge was torn up to us?
Exactly.
Exactly.
Where they gonna put those little thingies back down the road?
Well, I hear, but
If you're gonna paint a stripe, I don't think the stripe will work. If you're gonna put up no poles, I don't think a little pole
No, I know, I'm talking about little cement.
Concrete.
With concrete, so I can side swivel them.
Well, that's the question, we have no idea. Yeah.
And half of Hayesville will, too, not just me.
So we're all for alternatives, we are for total safety, and we would sure look at a proposal from the county. We have asked them more than once about this, and it's, as I say, in my opinion, it comes down to county commissioners not wanting to spend the money.
I agree.
With that, we'll go to council action request updates, A 6415 Keystone.
In regards to this property, the Prop Yonner has mode, taken care of the violations, but they do have a court date on July 17th. 6400 Osage, they have taken care of a few of the violations, but they do have a court date on August 7th. And the 301 Ranger, the resident has addressed all violations, and the case is considered
And a 14 adjournment?
Mayor and council make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion taken to adjourn. Discussion, question?
Kessler?
Yes.
Roden?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Binner?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.